Good evening and welcome to tonight's public hearing. This hearing will include Columbus City Council's Health and Human Services, Finance, and Workforce Development Committees. I'm Councilmember Priscilla Tyson, present pro tem of City Council and chair of these committees. Before we begin, please be aware that this hearing is being recorded for rebroadcast on CTV, Columbus Government Television Channel 3. The rebroadcast schedule is available at www.columbus.gov. Tonight's hearing is one in a series of bi-weekly committee hearings that I hold in order to review legislation in the committees that I chair. This includes Health and Human Services, Finance, and Workforce Development Committees. The goal of these hearings is to promote transparency and provide an opportunity for city residents to learn and to speak on legislation that impacts their lives. There will be, on occasion, when a committee is not covered because legislation isn't always scheduled for each committee. The intent of each hearing is to review legislation that will be on City Council's agenda for the following two weeks. Tonight we'll hear information on legislation in the Health and Human Services and Finance And presenters this evening include from the Department of Finance and Management, Joe Lombardi, who's the Finance Director, from the Department of Development, Hannah Jones, Deputy Director of Community Development, and then from Columbus Public Health, Roger Clorn, Assistant Health Commissioner. I will begin with legislation in the Finance Committee by asking Director Joe Lombardi to present. Director, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Pro Tem Tyson, and good evening. This evening, the Finance and Management Department has eight ordinances to ask for your consideration. Of those, six of them will be to set up universal term contracts for various chemicals for the Department of Public Utilities' Water and Sewer and Drains divisions. The first ordinance is Ordinance 0296-2017, and this authorizes the Finance and Management Director to enter into a universal term contract for the option to purchase powdered activated carbon with Calgon Carbon Corporation in the amount of $1. This chemical is used in our water treatment process, and this is to help mitigate taste and odor. And this is the sole user of this is our Division of Water. The annual expenditure is $600,000 a year.
Thank you.
The second ordinance is 0318-2007, and this authorizes the Finance and Management Director to enter into a universal term contract for the option to purchase soda ash with bonded Chemical Inc. and authorize a dollar to enter into that contract. Again, this is a chemical that's used in our water treatment process. The Division of Water is the sole user of it. This particular chemical is used to soften the water in our system. The annual estimated expenditure for this is $2.3 million a year. The next ordinance is 0319-2017. This authorizes the Finance and Management Director to enter into a universal term contract for the option to purchase liquid caustic soda with bonded chemicals, Inc., and authorize $1 to establish this contract. Again, this is a Division of Water-only contract, and this is used as a softening agent as well. One of the unique things about the water treatment process is that each water treatment plant has to use different chemicals to soften. So, one of the plants, the Parsons Avenue Water Plant, because they get their water from underground, has to use a different type of chemical than we do at the Dublin Road and Hapkamine, which is above ground using the river or the reservoirs. So that's why you see two different chemicals for softening. Yeah, I'm sorry, and the annual expenditure on that is $540,000 a year. The next ordinance is 0320-2017, and this authorizes the Finance and Management Director to enter into a universal term contract for the option to purchase sodium hypochlorite with bonded chemical, Inc., and authorize the expenditure of $1. This particular chemical is used by both the Division of Water and the Division of Sewers and Drains. They are the sole users of this. The contract is used as a disinfectant in both the water and wastewater treatment process. The annual expenditure is $570,000 from both or each, or, I'm sorry, I'm gonna start all over. I sound like Beyonce. Or, I'm sorry, it was Adele, wasn't it? $570,000 combined for both divisions. Wait until I have to say some of these other chemical names. This will be a tough one tonight. So there you have it on that one. The next is ordinance number 0324-2017, to authorize the Finance and Management Director to enter into a universal term contract for the option to purchase hydrofluoreslic acid with Mosaic Global Sales LLC and to authorize the expenditure of $1. This chemical is used solely by the Division of Water, and it is a product that is used for putting fluoride agent into our water treatment system. The annual expenditure for this is $240,000 a year. The next is 0325-2017, to authorize the Finance and Management Director to enter into a universal term contract for the option to purchase potassium permanganate, I used to know how to say this, with Chemrite, Inc., and authorize the expenditure of $1 to enter into that contract. This chemical is used solely by the Division of Water, and this product is used for oxidizing agent within the water treatment process. The annual expenditure is $170,000.
Thank you, Director, and certainly the last six ordinances suggest that we're going to spend about $4.4 million on products to treat our water.
Yes.
We want to make sure that certainly, hopefully, our viewing and listening audience are just seeing the products that we are buying to ensure that we always have the best safe drinking water, and I'm drinking water right here out of the faucet, so have safe drinking water. But do you know how our costs compare to, like, other cities in regard to their water treatment operations?
Not off the top of my head. I can certainly get that answer for you, but it really depends on the treatment that is used at those plants at other cities. As I indicated earlier, even here in the city of Columbus, all three plants will use a different chemical for the water treatment, just depending on the type of water that they're getting, what sources they're getting from. But we can talk to Public Utilities to see if we can get that answer for your office.
Certainly, I know that, you know, trying to compare apples to apples, but just kind of interesting, just to have some knowledge of maybe what some other cities are doing. But clearly, we want to make sure, ensure that our viewing and listening audience that we're spending a significant amount of dollars in our infrastructure and in these products to ensure that we're having safe drinking water.
Yes, and that is a good point. We do take pride in making sure we have safe drinking water for all of our residents, and certainly with any new regulations, that brings another challenge of potentially having to either not use a chemical and replace it with another one. So, you know, we're always on top of it, and we do monitor the use, and we do monitor the, how we put it into our system so that we're not putting too many chemicals in it, that we're putting just the right amount in there to make sure that we're meeting all EPA standards.
The, one other question, that certainly, like, Pickington, Westerville, other surrounding cities, they have their own water treatment plants, is that correct?
Some do. We do have some contracts that, with some of our suburban partners, for example, Gehanna, we call them a master meter city. What happens is we provide them the water up to their meter, to their, what we call their master meter, and then that water is then sent to their residents. But we do provide many of our suburbs, if not all of them, with water. It's very expensive to build a water plant and to run a water plant, so, and I believe they trust in the Division of Water and what we've done over the years to make sure our water is safe. So many of our suburban partners do receive their water from us.
Thank you.
The next ordinance is Ordinance 0390-2017. This authorizes the City Auditor to increase appropriations, to amend the 2016 capital improvement budget, to authorize the Finance and Management Director to expend monies for labor, materials, equipment, standard services, and professional services in conjunction with various energy-efficient and energy-management projects, to authorize the expenditure of $200,000 from the general fund and to declare an emergency. We have an energy efficiency employee, name is Willie. Willie handles all the city's energy efficiencies, and when we receive some tax credits, or, I'm sorry, some credits back for being energy-efficient, that comes back into a form of dollars. Those dollars are then deposited into the General Improvement Fund. We then leverage that, the fund, to do smaller projects for energy efficiency. For example, we changed out all the lights at the police firing range from regular light bulbs to LED to save on efficiency, on energy. We also have conducted a City Hall energy audit with those funds, and at the East Central Healthcare Center, we were able to put in new HVAC controls, very similar to those that maybe have a digital thermostat at home where we can set it for a certain time to go up or down so that we're not running our furnace or our air conditioner at full blast all day, and so we're able to save energy in that respect. So what we do with this money that is deposited, and we do smaller projects for various energy efficiencies around the city.
And these projects, are they normally done by your team, or are there opportunities for, thinking about some of our small and minority businesses, can they participate in thinking about these energy savings, renewable energy, et cetera?
Yeah, so we do, we do contract with other companies to do some of it, some of it we do ourselves, but certainly this is a great opportunity for smaller businesses, because these usually range anywhere between $10,000 to $20,000. You know, we do various small-scale HVAC electrical work, so, you know, we do look for small businesses to help us with that. And some, you know, my employee will do on his own. He has a background in energy efficiency, so he's able to do some of it as well.
Thank you.
Our last ordinance this evening is Ordinance 0417-2017. This is to amend the 2016 capital improvement budget to authorize and transfer of funds between projects within the Construction Management Capital Improvement Fund, to authorize the Director of Finance and Management to enter into a contract on behalf of the Office of Construction Management with Farber Corporation for the chiller system replacement at the Jerry Hammond Center, and to authorize the expenditure of $1,496,400 from the Construction Management Capital Improvement Fund. This contract was formally bid. There were four bids that were received. The lowest bid was from Farber Corporation, and this is to replace two current chillers at the Jerry Hammond Center. Chillers are 48 and 28 years old, so they are in need of replacement, and we want to request an emergency on this so that we can begin to replace those chillers before it starts warming up and have those chillers ready to go when we do hit the summertime. So this will be replacing some chillers that are needed at the Jerry Hammond Center.
And first of all, Director, I wanted to thank you. I know we had discussion on chillers last year, and that we were certainly going to be looking at our buildings and having, and determining when we need to replace chillers because obviously they're very costly, and it also takes a long time to get them in, and we didn't want to do them necessarily on an emergency basis when we, when the ones in a building can be broken, and then we have our employees and the residents of our community coming in our buildings, and we don't have air conditioning. So I appreciate the department's attention to this project, especially in advance of the summer months when, again, we, the need will be its greatest. I'm also pleased that this project will continue, you know, our commitment to our environmental sustainability and the grinning of our city buildings. So, thank you, and I'm sure everyone at 1111 will be very happy this summer. Thank you.
Thank you, you're welcome.
And now, we will transition to the Health and Human Services, and Hannah Jones from the Department of Development. The floor is yours.
Good evening, President Pro Tem Tyson. This evening, we have two ordinances for your consideration. The first is Ordinance 0438-2017. This ordinance does not have any additional funding tied to it. It is simply a request for a contract extension for a current contract with Stonewall Columbus. We entered a contract with them to do repair and improvements to their facility on North High Street, and they have had, excuse me, a protracted review with the Italian Village Commission, as well as getting their financing in place. So they need to extend the contract from its original end date of March 31st, 2017, to September 30th, 2017, to get them through the review process and get the construction loan in place.
Yes, I'm quite familiar with this, with what Stonewall wants to do in terms of the capital improvements to their building, and certainly, well, I would be wanting, sharing the, this with my council colleagues, and I certainly am in approval of the contract extension. So, thank you very much.
Great. The second ordinance we have for you this evening is 0181-2017, and while I'm reviewing it, I will invite Sarah Loken, who is the Community Relations Director for the Community Shelter Board, to come up. This ordinance is to allocate $625,000 from the Home Fund. $300,000 of that will be for Home Administration Funds, which is to support program staff positions within the Housing Division that administers our programs that utilize home funds. The remaining $325,000 is part of our contribution to the work of the Community Shelter Board, specifically to the tenant-based rental assistance that they provide. So I have asked Sarah to come down to talk specifically about their TBRRA program. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Sarah.
Good evening, President Pro Tem Tyson. It's good to see you. This proposed investment of $325,000 in Home Funds is meant to be used for tenant-based rental assistance, and we will be partnering with our partner agency, Columbus Area Integrated Health Services, for the use of these dollars to subsidize rent for up to 75 people who are living in supportive housing. And as you know, supportive housing is affordable housing. Yes, ma'am.
I'll take a, just a recess for about five minutes, and then we'll continue, okay? Thank you. Let me go and register. Going to move to Health and Human, we're gonna move to Health. And, so, Roger, Clorn, if you would, one second, start your testimony.
Good evening, Pro Tem Tyson. We have eight pieces of legislation tonight. Our first piece is Ordinance 0211-2017. Since 1974, Columbus Public Health has provided primary health care services to the underserved through contracts with community-based health services, and since 1998, we have contracted with Columbus Neighborhood Health Centers to provide primary health care services to medically indigent patients at various neighborhood health centers. This ordinance authorizes the Board of Health to enter into a contract with Columbus Neighborhood's Health Center Incorporated, doing business currently as Primary One Health, to provide these services, both primary health care and dental services, for a total amount of $4,549,110 for the period of January 1st, 2017 through December 31st, 2017.
Thank you, Roger, and certainly, I think you shared a little bit about just the partnership that we've had with what's now called Primary One, but have been known as Columbus Neighborhood Health Centers, that, as you said, since 1974, we've had a relationship with Primary One, and I know that they certainly work with us a lot in terms of our maternal care from Columbus Public Health to the Columbus, to Primary One, working with us on all of our maternal health. So, can you just elaborate on some of the other, some of the services that Primary One offers to our community, and why they're such an important asset?
Sure. They provide a wide range of services, primary care and pediatrics, obstetrics and gynecology, dental, vision, behavioral, mental health, adult medicine, specialty care such as cardiology, dermatology, and gastroenterology, and they also have a homeless healthcare program. They are located in various sites throughout Columbus. I can identify those if you'd like, or I can just direct people to their site at primaryonehealth.org, or they can also call at 614-645-5500 for anyone that's needing services or more information.
Thank you so much, and again, they are, they have a great partnership with us, and certainly have locations throughout our, the city of Columbus. I'm very pleased with the work that they do in terms of our homeless healthcare, working with the Community Shelter Board, when individuals are getting out of the hospital system, that they can go there and have respite, get better, and move forward. So I think this is great legislation. They've been a great partner of the city of Columbus, and I look forward to sharing this legislation with my council colleagues and the passage of this ordinance for the needed healthcare within the city of Columbus. Thank you.
Sure. The next two ordinances will support the Celebrate One Initiative. Ordinance 0860-2016 was approved by City Council in May of 2016, and it authorized the original contracts with these community agencies concerning the Community Connector Core Grant Project funded by United Healthcare, United Health Foundation. This project helps support a citywide resident engagement program to connect pregnant women to medical and social supports in the neighborhood. The initial contract period was February 1, 2016 through January 31, 2017. Later in 2016, ordinance 2958 was approved in December of 2016, and increased and extended the contract period to October 31, 2017. This ordinance tonight, 0317, will both increase the contract amounts and extend the time period to December 31, 2017. Specifically, the Community Development for All People, increased contract amount will be $52,435.85. Somali Can will be increased $34,611.12, and Ohio Health will be increased $17,305.56. These modifications will allow these community groups to host community connectors at their work sites and incorporate connectors into their community outreach and engagement of women of childbearing age residing in Columbus's South Side, Hilltop, and Linden areas. This modification will ensure that these sites will continue to serve the referenced neighborhoods, in addition to new sites in the northeast and southeast sides in 2017. The program is projected to serve approximately 2,000 to 4,000 women.
Thank you, Roger. Do you know if the, the funds for this are coming from the United Healthcare Foundation? And so if we're doing a contract modification or a contract extension, is it still coming, is it coming from the United Healthcare dollars?
Yes, it's the original United Health Foundation grant. It's a three-year grant period, and that is housed in the city's private grants fund.
And do you know what sites are gonna be, you said in 2017, northeast and southeast sites?
Yes. The Community Development for All People will be in the Near South, zip codes 43205, 206, and 207. Somali Can would be in the Northeast, 43219, and Ohio Health would be in the Southeast, 43227, and 43232.
Thank you very much. These, the Community Connector Corps are really instrumental in helping us with the Celebrate One Initiative, so, thank you.
The ordinance I just spoke about, modified existing community connector contracts. This next ordinance is a new community contract, connector contract, it's 0, ordinance 0357-2017, and these are grant funds awarded by the United Health Foundation to, for a contract with the YMCA of Central Ohio. It'll authorize the Board of Health to enter into a contract for an amount not to exceed $103,833.36 for a time, for a time period of February 1, 2017 through December 31, 2017.
And Roger, will this be with the YMCA? Is it going to be in any particular neighborhood for these particular dollars?
Yes. They're going to have upwards of six different community connectors. One in the Morris Road, 43224, 43229 area, the Hilltop in 43204, the Near East in 43203, and also at the Van Buren Shelter, which is really covering the 43222 and 43223 area.
Right, thank you very much. Great that we're gonna have a partnership with the Y's to be able to, again, have a connector corps to support those neighborhoods and the neighborhoods where we have pregnant women, again, to ensure that they have successful pregnancies and their children are living past their first birthday, and that's a great partner. Thank you.
Sure. Our next ordinance is 0360-2017. It authorizes the Board of Health to enter into a competitively bid contract with KNS Services for video monitoring, equipment, and maintenance for the period of June 1, 2017 through May 31, 2018, an amount not to exceed $28,500. This contract provides maintenance services for various electronic security equipment at our 240 Parsons Avenue facility. The next two ordinances relate to our Public Health Emergency Preparedness Grant. Ordinance 0385 allows us to be awarded additional funds from the Ohio Department of Health for our Public Health Emergency Preparedness Grant, and it allows us to accept additional funds in the amount of $98,547, for a total grant award of $1,095,535 for the period ending June 30, 2017. These funds will allow us to write and maintain response plans. We provide, or create over 50 plans for different scenarios, such as infectious disease response, environmental health hazard response, and mitigation plans covering Columbus and Worthington jurisdictions.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
The ordinance I just described allowed us to receive the $98,000. We act as a fiscal pass-through for the county as a whole, so we pass about a third as population-based funding to the Franklin County Public Health. So ordinance 0395 is basically passing on their proportionate share of the same planning funds that we received. So this ordinance is needed to increase contract purchase order 018339 in the amount of $31,357.66 for a total contract amount not to exceed $320,255.24 for the period ending June 30, 2017.
Thank you.
Our next up is ordinance 0389-2017. This authorizes the Director of Finance and Management to establish a purchase order with the National Restaurant Association for the provision of Serve Safe books for the Food Protection Program, which teaches Serve Safe classes to food facility workers. This contract for $35,000 allows us to purchase 545 books in a variety of languages. The Serve Safe books are sole source and provided by the National Restaurant Association. We use these books to teach Serve Safe managers, manager, managers' class to food facility food facility workers. The Ohio Food Code requires that all the facilities that prepare food have to have someone that has passed this class. Uh, the classes are offered every month, the training is a two-day class, and then there's a certification, uh, test at the end of the two-day class.
Thank you. This is an important class that's offered by Columbus Public Health because we certainly want to ensure that, uh, when individuals are eating in our restaurants, um, that they have gone through the Safe Serve Program and that all the restaurants are certainly, um, providing safe food for, um, the individuals that come into those, those businesses. How many individuals participated in the classes last year?
Uh, last year we had almost 1,300 individuals attend the Level Two Food Training.
Thank you very much.
Final ordinance is 0279-2017. Uh, this is a contract with, um, WBNS 10TV for the Commit to Be Fit Campaign. Uh, lets us to continue, uh, our relationship with, uh, Commit to Be Fit in partnership with Metro Parks, Giant Eagle, and the YMCA of Central Ohio. Um, Columbus Public Health, uh, helps inform viewers and readers with practical, hands-on information utilizing 10TV's Facebook, Twitter pages, on-air news, and on-air promotional spots, providing them with education they can use to help make the necessary changes to live healthier, active lives. Um, again, this is for $75,000 for the period of March 1st, 2017 through February 28th, 2018.
And can you just share the importance of this relationship?
Yes, um, it, it's a wide-ranging, um, ability to, uh, send our message out. Uh, this partnership includes, uh, PSAs, promotional spots, weekly news stories on Channel 10, uh, lets us brand and co-brand with the Commit to Be Fit webpage, uh, weekly e-blast, Facebook and Instagram, um, and we feel it's a real value, uh, that, that we get great value for the $75,000 investment. Um, we receive almost 2 million impressions in 2000 and click, in 2016, we had, uh, 2 million impressions and 2,000 clicks, uh, delivered 260 TV billboards with a $91,000 value, a TV promotional schedule valued at $138,000, and extra cross-promotion via partnership schedules that added another $150,000. So again, we're getting, um, great exposure for this, uh, investment.
Uh, thank you, and I think it's important just to mention that, thinking about what your strategic priorities are, um, at Columbus Public Health, and certainly want to reduce the rates of over, the rates of obesity and, and overweight in our community. And certainly having this partnership with, um, Channel 10 and, um, it's a valuable tool as we communicate healthy eating, physical activity strategies, and really promote the com, your programs and resources that are at Columbus Public Health for our community. And so this is a great partnership and, um, to try to make sure that our community, um, can, will be a healthy community for all. So, I'd be happy to share this with my colleagues and be in support of continuing this relationship. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, that is all the legislation that we have this evening. I hope this evening's hearing has provided insight into programs and community initiatives from Columbus Public Health, the Department of Development, as well as finance-related legislation that's necessary to support our ongoing operations. And certainly tonight, because the major focus was on, um, safe drinking water. As residents, these hearings are an opportunity for you to learn and become engaged on issues that are presented. Before I conclude tonight's hearing, I want to first wish everyone a Happy Valentine's Day. And then, um, I want to thank the Department of Development and Finance Director Joe Lombardi, Department of Development Hannah Jones, Deputy Director of Community Development, the, from Columbus Public Health, Roger Clorn, Assistant Health Commissioner, City Council's Legislative Research Office, especially Michael Kessler, who leads the Legislative Research Office, Matt Erickson, who staffs the Finance Committee, Erin Beck, who staffs Health and Human Services, Nancy Sully from the Council's Community Engagement Division, my staff, Nicole Harper and Carl Williams, and then the hard-working team at CTV who make these hearings possible, and last but not least, the residents of the city of Columbus who make this the best place to live, work, and to raise a family. Thank you and enjoy your Valentine's Day. Good night, good evening.